Like milk cows.
I'd like to welcome you all to the annual meeting in the town of Powell. To begin our evening, this evening, I'd like to recognize as the town report has dedicated the program to Jim and now Winchester. Jim, we thank you. You've been a great asset to the town, and I know you will continue to be, and we all appreciate it. You make us all proud. Thank you. To begin with, I'd just like to make the usual announcement about if anybody would like to speak who is not a resident of Powell, simply express that you are not a resident, and the laws say that we have to get the approval of the group for that you can speak. So if you would like to speak at some point, and you're not a member of the community, not a member of Powell, please let us know. We can begin with the articles. As most of you remember, the first three articles are simply paperwork that need to be done here at this meeting. After those first three articles, we'll read the remaining articles, and those people that wish to speak to them certainly have an opportunity to do so. So as I read the first three articles, I just need a motion and a second to work them through. The first one, to hear reports of town officials and take action thereon.
Ryan, grab me one. Grab Angie one.
Can you get that, Julie? Do you want?
I didn't hear the second.
Do we have a second? Jim Winchester, very good. Okay, let's see. Number two, to see if the voters will authorize the treasurer to receive taxes until they become delinquent. Thank you. Have a second?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, well, I think we're all set. Three, shall the voters authorize payment of real and property taxes on November 10, 2025 before 5:00 p.m. by delivery to the town office, postmarked on or before that date online? Payment must be made before that date and time. The time is 5:00 p.m. Got a motion? Thank you, wait a second. Very good. We can move on then. Article four has to do with the elections of town officer, moderator, select board, select board, constable, trustee of public monies. Any questions there? Five, shall the town place its public burial grounds under the charge of a cemetery commission pursuant to 18 VSA 5373, consisting of three ministers to be elected separately?
We just did the first three. We did the motion and the second, but we didn't take a vote.
Yeah, we did take a vote. Okay. Julie has reminded me that, and I should have said this, that we need a motion on each of these articles, so I'll take a motion on the first article.
No, we already have the motion. We just didn't take whether, yes or no.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying yes. Those opposed, say no. Shall, number, Article six, shall the town?
No, we have to do each of them separately. So you did the first one. Now we have to go.
That's Article one. Yeah. We have a motion and we have a second. We have to vote. We didn't vote. We know we had our. Where's Article?
Well, let's see here. We voted on.
We didn't vote. We had a motion and a second, but we didn't take a vote. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, so we have to vote. So we just go back.
We just did one. We just did one.
Just did one again. Okay. Just to be sure that we follow the regulations, I apologize for not being up on that. We need to have, once we have a motion, and it's been seconded, we need to vote. So we'll go back to Article one. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article two, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we can go down now to Article four. And we've had that, all those in favor. We don't have to do that. We have to go through those. Okay, so now we're at five. And we just did five. Article six, shall the town provide notice of availability of the annual report by positioning notices on the town website, town clerk's office, and at least two other places at least 30 days before the annual meeting instead of mailing postcards or otherwise distributing the report to the voters of the town pursuant to 24 VSA 1682? Any comments? Article three, if anybody would like to speak to this, the fire department or the rescue squad, certainly feel free to do so. Shall the voters appropriate $1,637,000, $637.72 for the general expenses of the town, of which $905,350.32 to be raised by taxes and $1,594.97.40 from a prior year's undesignated surplus funds? Number eight, shall the voters appropriate $1,201?
Wait, wait, one second.
They want to talk.
They want to talk.
I didn't see a hand. Thank you.
So Powell Rescue's first.
Becky Levine, Powell Rescue. I'd like to take a moment to express our heartfelt gratitude for the continued support of our community. Your trust allows us to provide essential care when it's needed most. In 2024, we responded to 837 calls, and I'm proud to say that we answered 100% of the calls within our response area. This is only possible because of the dedication of our team and the support of our community. Right now, we're seeing about a 44% increase in call volume compared to where we were at this time last year, and our crews continue to work tirelessly and train to ensure that we are prepared to provide the best possible care we can. In 2016, our budget, our budget has been $50,000 since 2016, which was sufficient when we were a fully volunteer service. Volunteering in EMS, in the EMS industry has become increasingly rare, and the demands of not only the job we do, but on our service have grown exponentially. We moved to paid staff, which has better allowed us to meet the needs of our community and surrounding areas. As there are rising costs everywhere, these costs also affect us, which have been significant increases across the board, including medical supplies, insurance, fuel, and ambulance prices. Just to put some things into perspective, in 2016, we received cardiac, two cardiac monitors, each priced out at the price of $24,000 apiece, which are required to be on our ambulance. Today, that same monitor costs $55,000, which is a more than 50% increase in price. In 2018, when we purchased one of our ambulances, $150,000. The price of that ambulance is now over $250,000. In order to keep up with these rising costs and continue providing the level of service to our community and the care that it deserves, we've made the difficult but necessary decision to increase our budget to $150,000. This adjustment will ensure that we continue to provide the meeting, or continue meeting the growing demands of our community while maintaining the high-quality service that you expect from us. We will continue to apply for grants to offset larger costs. Thank you for your unwavering support so we can continue to provide care to our community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Anybody else?
Evening. Jeff Miller with the Powell Valley Fire Department, second assistant chief. Just going to read what we wrote into the town report here quick. Powell Valley Fire Department would like to acknowledge and thank the residents of the town of Powell, as well as the select board for their continued support. The funds received each year are used for fire department operations, building, and apparatus maintenance, insurance, and general upkeep of our three stations. We have asked the select board to raise our yearly budget this year to include funds for payments for a new fire truck, also to raise the amount of refunding for our building fund from $20,000 to $40,000. All very much necessary increases to continue to provide the best possible protection to the residents of the town, as well as the members of our department. This year, this year, yeah, this past year, we once again hosted a cash calendar fundraiser. We were able to give away over $3,000 to those who purchase calendars, all raised from generous donations from local businesses and residents. Proceeds in the sales of the calendars once again went directly to our new building fund for the replacement of our center station. This past year, we also received money from the select board from ARPA funds, from which we were able to purchase a set of turnout gear, a new boiler for our E-station, a side-by-side that will be used for brush fires and search and rescue operations. We also used some of the funds to modify our brush and utility truck to accommodate a skid unit, which we received from the Williams Town Fire Department, which has a water tank, pump, and hose reel to combat wildfires. The last few years, we have tried to focus more on community outreach by being more visible and involved in many town activities, including teaching fire prevention here at the elementary school. I'm losing. Our annual Santa parade, the community tree lighting, and the Powell Day festivities. You can also follow our Facebook page under Powell Valley Fire Department to stay informed on most everything we're doing, from training, calls, and active emergency events in town, to fundraisers and special events. Please continue to support our emergency services here in town, as one day it could save your life. Respectfully, the membership of the Powell Valley Fire Department.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the residents and the residents of the community for the continued support each year. This year, we have increased our, our budget. After 20-plus years, we can no longer support fire, to support fire equipment purchases along with yearly increases such as fuel, insurance, utilities. We have seen an increase in volunteers over the past two years, which is a good thing for the community, but we also need to provide them with gear for training before they fight fires. Many of our firefighters are attending out-of-state forces to receive training. Vermont Fire Academy has less instructors and, that are, and less instructors that are likely to travel to southern Vermont. We also took delivery of a new bumper tanker in February. This truck will replace our 1992 engine tanker. The truck was purchased without asking for funding from the town. This truck will hopefully be in service within the next two weeks. We also took delivery of a new side-by-side utility off-road vehicle, since we've seen an increase over the past few years in wildfires and off-road rescue. This vehicle was purchased from ARPA money from the town, with which we thank the select board. We have ordered a skid unit that will be delivered in the spring. Each, each year, we apply for both state and federal granting, grants for equipment, replacement, and upgrades. These grants are harder and harder to obtain each year. As always, we will stay, we, we stay involved with local community events such as Community Day, the Block Party on Main Street, the Polar Express. Plus, we also assist our, our fellow fire, fellow fire department, Powell Valley, with prevention with local schools. We are one of the only communities in the area that has, that has completely volunteer fire departments. And we are proud to serve the community and volunteers and hope to continue that for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to that article? Jim?
My name is Jim Winchester, and I live at 630 Skywell Road East. I just wanted to bring a couple of things up. The fireworks are going to not be this year. It's going to be the last year for fireworks, and I think nationally with the fires and stuff, they're going to be outlawed in a lot of places, but that's not the real reason. I guess the real reason is the fact the fire department needs money. And I want to give the remaining money, $9,000 to $700, to the Powell Rescues, I mean, to the fire, for their new hardware, to town offices. So that's what I want to say tonight.
Do you want to say it now?
Yes. My gardener, chair, and the select board. This year is, in the general budget, this is the first year that we've had our emergency services in the general budget, as most of you know. In the past, it's always been a ballot article. And in those ballot articles, I want to be, I want to be perfectly clear that if it were to be a ballot article this year for each one of those three organizations that have just spoken here, it would be the exact same amount that we're putting into the general budget. They came, the three organizations, our emergency services, came to the select board with their worksheet, which we ask everybody to do, whether it's the zoning administrator, or the DRB, or whoever. And that's what, those are the figures that they came up with, that they were going to be putting on for ballot articles. So it's kind of cutting edge. I've been, I've been on that side with the emergency services, doing exactly what they've been doing. I've been that fire chief in this town, the same as they're, what they're looking for. I can't tell you, Craig and I were talking about this yesterday, and Jimmy's when we were getting a sandwich. I can't tell you how nerve-wracking it is, and it's never failed in my life, the ballot articles have never failed. But when you're, but when you're one of the administrators, I'm not going to say just chief, because it's not just the chiefs that run those organizations, right? But when you're one of the administrators that run those emergency services programs in our department, there's, there's been a lot of late nights waiting at the firehouse when the voting used to be there, to see if the ballot article passed for the funding for the next year. And it's been, I've been, I've been that person who's gone home, come back down to the firehouse at 10 o'clock to see if we got money, after, after everything was counted. I've been on that end. Craig and I were talking about it. This year, it's definitely different. We worked hard, the five select board members, and the emergency services departments, we worked really hard together to get this onto our general budget where we feel that it belongs. And I just wanted to say that, that I know there's been, there's been some questions about the amount, and how coming so much, it was going to be the same. They were coming for the same money, whether it was ballot article number 27 or whatever, on our, on our, when you go to vote tomorrow. It was going to be the same exact numbers. There's, they're not inflated because they're in the general budget. This is what they need to operate for the next year, for the next fiscal year.
Very good. Any questions on that? Yes.
Hi, Jenny Duer. Yeah, you're the fire department, I think that I support all of that. I have a question, though, about the numbers here. If I'm missing something, Article seven says the voters shall appropriate 1,676.37, of which these two numbers, but they don't add up to that, so where's the other chunk?
If you look at the general fund budget, there's other numbers that play into that.
So, so it says?
Excuse me, excuse me, a couple people are having difficulty hearing. Would you just clarify your questions and then?
On Article seven, it says, shall the voters appropriate $1,670,637.72 for the general expenses of the town? And then it gives two numbers, of which $905,350 is to be raised by taxes and $159,497 from prior year, prior year undesignated surplus funds. Where's the difference of those, those two don't add up to 16.71, so I'm just, I'm just not understanding. It goes to the other revenue.
At the top of the budget report, lists revenues first. The other revenues are listed in the top of the budget report. So all of those numbers plus those two totals make the total.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everybody, that there is another number that gets added to these two numbers to make that total.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Article eight, shall the voters appropriate $1,292,337.43 for the maintenance and construction of highways of the town, of which $1,26,114.81 is to be raised by taxes, and $71,422.62 from prior year's undesignated surplus funds? Number nine, shall the voters appropriate $11,000 to the Bennington Area Visiting Nurses Ten, shall the voters appropriate $500 to the Bennington County Conservation District? Eleven, shall the voters appropriate $500 to the Benefit County Associated Against Children's Abuse, a nonprofit agency? Yes. Sure, come on up.
My name's Bob Kelenowski, and I'm going to give you my background, because I think it's important for this one. I am a retired lieutenant from Vermont State Police. Part of my duties way back then, I investigated a lot of child abuse cases. So I volunteered today to come and speak about the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse, otherwise known as the CAC, or the Child Advocacy Center. Jenne Caslin is the director. She only has another, it's her and another full-timer that work there. She's spread thin, she feels bad that she couldn't be here, or another representative. I said, I'll do it if you want. So they help with children and families affected by abuse. They help with interviews, advocacy, support, and referrals to other professional services. The center staff by two full-time professionals, including Jenne. They have two special investigative unit people to do law enforcement, who have represented from the state police, they have representative from Bennington Police Department. Last year, they had a total of 113 new cases and over 3,000 encounters. What they count as an encounter is they took these involved to a school, working with a family, and they do abuse prevention programs. So they keep busy. I know Jenne, I know she works hard. The other person that works there works really hard. They're always trying to do fundraisers to raise money for the office. It's, it's really an important place. It serves as a hub for child abuse and sexual assault investigations. They also act as a liaison for families. They also act as a liaison for families with agencies such as DCF, law enforcement, the State Attorney's Office, and Department of Corrections. Their main mission is protecting and supporting the children and families of Bennington County, and she says, "Thank you for Vermont's years of work."
Thank you. Are there any other people I'd speak to that? Article 12, shall the voters appropriate $2,000 for the Bennington Free Clinic? Thirteen, shall the voters appropriate $2,000 to the Bennington Project Independence for comprehensive pre-out-in-person adult day services to Pownell residents? Fourteen, shall the voters appropriate $1,800 to BRO-C, Community Action in Southwestern Vermont, for crisis fuel and food self-assistance? Fifteen, shall the voters appropriate $600 to the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Volunteer Program for the support of the services rendered to the residents of the town? Sixteen, shall the voters appropriate $200 to Vermont Greenup for the support of services rendered to the residents of the town? Seventeen, shall the voters appropriate $6,000 to Oak Hill Children's Center? Eighteen, shall the voters appropriate $3,000 to the Pownell Youth Baseball for the support of the baseball and soccer programs?
I'm somebody from Baydoby, Colby Harwood, I live on St. Joe Crossing. I'm the president of the league. This year, with the $3,000 that has been allocated to us, we have replaced the roofs on the dugouts that are in disarray for safety of the kids. That was a huge donation by R.K. Miles in Manchester, also Parks and Recs donated towards that. We donated some money, put money in ourselves. The program is doing great things for the kids in Pownell. It's free. The kids don't have to pay, the parents don't have to pay. And last year was the first time in nine years that the minors league went to playoffs. That was something. It was, you know, all the coaches are all volunteers, all the board members are all volunteers. And I heard you, we have a couple of days coming up that we need some help with field work. We're going to be adding sand into the clay to make it a little easier for the kids to, you know, learn sliding and stealing and everything like that. We'd sure appreciate some help. So keep an eye on our baseball team, Pownell's baseball, on baseball. Thank you.
Nineteen, shall the voters appropriate $500 to Project Against Violent Encounters for the support of services rendered to the residents of the town? Twenty, shall the voters appropriate $15,000 to the Solomon Wright Library for operations and maintenance?
Hi, I'm Emily Gold, and I'm the director of the library. I am going into my second year now, and I just wanted to highlight some of the points that I made in the town report, but I thought that I would make it a little bit more relevant to where we are right now. It turned out last year we had 83% more patron visits than we did in 2023, which is huge. Twenty-six free events, including our block parties, and a 30th anniversary party for the Pownell Historical Society. We have a bus stop now for the neighborhood, and the bus does stop Monday through Friday, even though we're not with it every single day. We received four grants, including one grant for providing better high-speed Wi-Fi to our patrons, and one for accessibility, so we can make our entrances easier for people to get in and out. We had kids programming in collaboration with Pownell Elementary School, Head Start in Oak Hill. We have an on-demand puzzle swap now, so you can walk into the library and grab a puzzle, if you have one to leave, you can, but we have so many, you can take one with you. We have a library of things where you can check out snowshoes, camping equipment, and all sorts of stuff, museum passes, and we have a path to Prospect right now, and the Vermont State Parks. We always have new books for adults and kids. We have interlibrary loans, which extends our offerings, so we don't have to purchase everything ourselves. We have an upgraded computer now for patrons to use. We're doing community conversations in partnership with friends in Pownell, so that's going to bring a lot of different of our local organizations into the library and be able to showcase what they're doing. We have a partnership with the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging, with a health fair, and we have a monthly mindful moments cafe for any Vermonters who would like to come. We have free meeting space for local organizations, and we posted the Select Board, the 4-H, the Quiet Valley Cultures, the Book Club, and the Parks and Rep Committee. Our momentum going into this year is really great, even in January and February, which is probably too really cold and really miserable, we're up 47% even from last year with our patron visits. And our goal is to just keep doing this. We're going to keep offering programs, resources, and books for all of you. We are asking for the same amounts as we did last year on our ballot article. And I think the thing that I'm the most proud of is that while we're doing all these things, we're really trying to welcome the community in, and we just want the library to be a calm welcoming space, to bring your kids for the afternoon, or to sit and wait for the bus, or connect to others, or even just get help scanning and printing documents, we're happy to help you do that. And so I really just want everyone to know that the library is only a place for everyone in town.
Thank you. Article 21, shall the voters appropriate $30,000 to the Solomon Wright Library for the support of the director? Yes?
My name's Walt Klinger, and I've been over 20 years, and I'm the library director, and all volunteers sent in this time to create programs that provide cultural interest, information, and ties into the resources we need and connect the community together. And it really works and creates a place for people to go and get together around issues and interests that they have, and I can thank her and all volunteers for that. I also wanted to put in a thought, for my, my favorite charity, as you may or may not know, the state of Massachusetts is looking to bring the passenger rail service out to northern towns, and I have been working with different groups in Mass and Pownell, and will continue to do so, to look at how to get that train coming through Pownell and go all the way to Rensselaer and New York City, and going to be working with different people to provide the political crowd and organization to advocate for passenger rail here in Vermont, which we desperately need. We have a station here in Pownell, it'd be three and a half hours to Boston, and four and a half to New York City with a change in Rensselaer.
We can move on into Article 22. Shall the voters appropriate $1,200 for the Southwestern Vermont Area Council on Aging for the support of services rendered to the residents of the town? Twenty-three, shall the voters appropriate $5,000 to Sunrise Family Resource Center, a not-for-profit agency, for the support of services rendered to the town?
Good evening to the board and to all of you here. My name is Jonathan Cooper, and for a number of years now have been the board chair at the Sunrise Family Resource Center. We provide services all across Bennington County to families, to children, and because we know that assisting families allows us to be the parents that our kids know that we are, and that's the most important part of our mission, and it always has been. Pownell is our second-largest user group, and so for a number of years now, we've enjoyed the support of the town each year through the ballot article process. We're excited to have over 50 children in Pownell benefiting from the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is a new partnership for us at Sunrise. We know that number's going to go up this year, and it's some of the best funding that we can use to provide children with books that they receive at home, and a way that is fun for the entire family to become a part of. We've had automotive repair programs that Pownell families, nine Pownell families have participated in, to keep them on the move and to expand their choices for work, for play, and for living. Sunrise is an organization about family and about living, and so thank you for your support.
Article 24, shall the voters appropriate $2,500 to the Torial Center for the Support of Adult Education and Literacy to the residents of the town? Article 25, is there somebody that wanted to speak to that? Sorry. Article 25, shall the voters appropriate $440 to the Vermont Center for Independent Living for the Support of People with Disabilities in the Town? Article 26, shall the voters appropriate $2,000 to the Pownell Valley Seniors for Services Rendered to the Residents of the Town? That's the final article. As most of you know, the polls will be open from 10 to 7, I think it is, at the firehouse...
No, at the office.
At where?
The town office.
At the town office. I'm glad you corrected that, at the town office. So between 10 and 7, don't want people showing up at the fire department.
No.
All right. Are there any other, any other issues that should be brought before this committee? Yes?
Just a point of information question, Dave Lowe. And I remember a year ago, Mike, there was some contentiousness about the question of how to get onto the ballot. Could you just remind us what was resolved in terms of that, the process?
For getting the ballot or ballot article...
The whole process of having to get signatures or not?
Julie's got it.
Nope. I can answer.
That's where Julie comes in, that's her, that's her expertise, so to speak.
Just to be sure, I know what you're asking. Are you, are you asking about the social service appropriation policy?
No, I'm asking about remembering last year at this time, clearly need a give-and-take because if I recall correctly, suddenly, in order to get an organization onto the ballot, every year, you're going to have to get X number of signatures.
So I think he's talking about, about the ballot article.
Yeah, it's really highlighted on this timeline, if you have this. It shows where the board did change the policy, but then at last year's town meeting, there was a lot of feedback that it wasn't going to be feasible for many agencies, so the board went back to the old policy. You do not need to collect signatures unless you're raising the amount. Essential services do not need to collect signatures at all, obviously, they're in the general fund, but that decision was made sort of before they put them in the general fund.
The amounts requested are elevated than the new ones.
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any other questions that would be, like, directed to the, to the Select Board? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, you can't adjourn.
Jim, and somebody else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You can't adjourn, we have to conclude this tomorrow, we have to, so we don't adjourn. So who was the first one? Who was the first one? Was it Jim?
Jim. Did Julie just say adjourn? I don't know.
Who was the second question?
Julie, what you got?
I have a question.
Wait a minute, one minute, one minute, please. Julie has a question.
Who was the one that seconded?
Who was the seconded?
Thank you.
Oh, she wanted to know who seconded.